Are you recording us now? You just reminding me?
Yes. I just started it.
There will be a position open if you want to just stay as an alternate or if you want to be full time member.
It's boring.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I have a vote anyway, but mostly. Okay. So, think about it, we have another guy coming, so, you know.
Sure.
You can stay either alternate, or you can ask whether, and you do, you may for the later, to tackle, to see the decision of change.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll watch him on the end of the video.
Seven. I just hear. Yeah. Yeah. You can stop right away. You call me Donald first, Michelle. She's not, she's not, she's okay.
Well, I can hear you, but it, it's just, it's a little muffled.
Oh, it's a day, huh?
Yeah.
We're getting suggestions from the audience.
To do what?
You call me Donald.
I know.
Position is open, so.
Maybe next time.
Yeah.
Or I'll do some, some peanuts or candy or something.
Probably somewhere a lot, there's much out here.
I could have brought all my Halloween candy.
That's, yeah. You know, I've got Shanghai Little Nightmare, changing through the rivers.
There, Stephen.
I get tired of all that.
Yeah.
The soup I have to come up, somebody screwed up.
Yeah. It's frustrating.
Hey, everybody.
Michelle?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to have the Woodstock GBA meeting for November ninth, two thousand twenty-three to order. Second, second? Okay, for form, we have Dave Gordon, what?
You want to submit this?
Okay, now it'll take a while. So, I would like to submit the minutes for October twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, for approval, second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All right, approved. All right, let's get to, we have four public hearings tonight, and we're gonna start with the GBA case number twenty-three twenty-eight, application of Christopher Plow and Yan Noot, correctly if I'm wrong, for property located in Tannery Brook, Woodstock, New York, two thousand nine eight, a zero point three six acre parcel located within an H R zoning district, per variance from the zoning law, Tannery Woodstock, Article five, supplementary regulations, section two sixty dash thirty-two, A, fences, walls, and gates, to install a six foot high pool fence in a front yard, only a four foot high fence is allowed. Okay, so.
That's me.
Please, come on up, so.
Or I just want to mention that Marcia is online.
Oh. You, is it Roger?
Hi, everyone.
Say your name.
Marcia's willing.
Thank you, Marcia. Okay, we're hearing the GBA case number twenty-three twenty-eight. Yes, sir.
Hi, so I'm Chris Plow, my wife, Yaga, was talking about here in the afternoon. We have a permit application to put in a pool on our top job. My wife is, got pretty much trying to find. She figures number six is still totally. Well, there's just one line saying there will be, you know, compliant, fastened, and driven. We've put up a fence, built by fence builders USA, who are needing more way, so, said we can some, but we wanted a pool there, between four and six feet high. Said that even if, uh, the pool fence won't be able to shut. So, we found inspection over there. And because the gun is installed, the gate's opening the wrong way. It's the back gate, it's been in the front. Uh, there's a, uh, there's a slope from the street down toward the house, and we had a jackhammer, offer to change the direction of that gate. We also realized that it would just be safer if we were in fourth with from the corner of the property, to the top of the pool area, to the government, and quickly for providing that. So, now, one. The case is a little bit of an interesting, this is no pool fence in front, basically now. So, our request for variance is based on a few things, one is that because there's a slope coming down from the street, uh, the fence is actually, the bottom of the fence is two feet below the rate of the road, the ten minute road up in the street, when we went to the house, and it's, it's like the fence is only four feet. Uh, so that's going to block the house. It's also the fence, we have kind of a big, so the fence sliding down a setback fifty street, so it's not like a good, you know, uh, sand fence right up the street like that. Um, and then because the property levels off, after you get beyond the fence, I will feed some photos, uh, and see, it doesn't, it doesn't allow, I hope the folks on Zoom, uh, that property's a base from Michelle. You can see, it really doesn't block the view or something. Can this army and neighbors, the three who comply, sent emails, you know, sent, they, the fact of the fence, they have no objections to it, they, they let the, uh, the, uh, it's all. Uh, and lastly, with the, uh, with a shorter fence, I think somebody standing on the street building a little, so, an extra two feet. I've done this before, that's kind of what I've read on Michelle, and if you have questions, or if there's anything you'd like to hear.
You said you had a variance for the pool, you said you had done this before, but you got a variance to get it through the front yard?
No, the pool's not the front yard, so, so if you look at that, the pool's kind of around to the side and the back, but nevertheless, there's a straight view from the street, you can see it, because the fence is intact here. This is in the side of the house.
I'm having a hard time hearing, it's very distorted, maybe push the microphone back a little bit?
Martin, take the master down, just the first one right toward you, just take that down a little bit, testing. How's that? Any better?
Much better.
Okay.
Kedok.
Thank you. We're closing. Uh, okay, so, that was just a straight permit for the pool, and then you had to do the fence, and then, so you have another fence around the pool, and this is a secondary fence now?
Yeah, the, the original fence, the sides in the back, uh, that was built, put a permit for the pool, that's all still there, we now fix the gates, so hopefully the Bush comes back to inspect. Well, that part of the fence will pass, we've now added a new front section, so this, this front part of the fence is no longer a pool fence, because we added this, a removed fence, uh, you know, going from the corner of the house.
Since your variance for a fence in the front yard, six foot, front yard fence, where only a four foot fence is allowed, so clearly it's even mentioned in the variance, sorry. Okay, and that's this whole section of fence here. That's just from her. Marcia?
No, I saw the picture clearly, can't really hear clearly, but you, I hear you, but the speaker, who's speaking, maybe the, push the mic back a little.
Yeah, I was probably speaking too fast, my wife said slower than I'm doing.
You're soft spoken, so I'm surprised.
Oh, really?
My voice clips anyway, but, um. Well, we're gonna need somebody to put their eyes on this, to receive, is it?
I'll do it.
Martin, there. So he's gonna turn on, I guess you can see the fence from the road, and if he needs to get here, I guess you, you have your number?
On here?
I think so. Four starts with four.
Yeah.
Yeah. I have certain applications if you need it, you know? Okay, so, typically, so, we just, you know, we have sixty-two days, sixty-two days to render decision. We tried to do it a little bit, but we're not gonna be together until November second, we can never, uh, you, eleven, I think, and then we will meet again, another month, huh?
December.
Already in September. We are already there. Probably caught up, okay, so we're not gonna be till December, so it's gonna be a month before we render.
Okay, so we won't ask, we're talking to come back and inspect until we know, but, you know, plan those requirements. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Wait, I have to read the contiguous neighbors.
All right, I thought you did that. No?
What?
You don't do that, don't leave that.
Um, Tannery Brook Farm, Brenda Bejo, at sixteen Tatcher Ridge Road, Woodstock, New York, I just want to point out that she did send a letter of support of the fence. Greco Family Trust, Thurman and Barry Greco, thirty-one Tannery Brook Road in Woodstock, they also sent a letter of support. Rosemarie Croissant and Robert Croissant on thirty-four Forest Road Drive, Woodstock. Caroline Yvonne Duff, Five Streamside Terrace, Woodstock, New York. Leonard Goldberg and Regina Chu, fourteen twenty-five York Avenue, Penthouse, New York, New York. Sarah J. Coleman and Daniel Ellis, forty-one Pine Grove Street in Woodstock. Linda G. Fachi, two twenty-one Maverick Road in Woodstock. And Thomas Hugh Bullard at twenty-three ninety-nine Glasgow Turnpike. There is also another letter sent by a Martha Abraham, even though she's not a contiguous neighbor, um, she's about three or four properties down the road from Mr. Plow, and she also sent a letter of support.
Thank you, Michelle, uh, we also, uh, Mr. Joseph Bellak is, uh, is in the house, so to speak, the digital house. Joe, Joe, just say your name, so we can put it on the record.
Yes, yes, Joe Bellak, and I apologize, I'm actually in the hospital with my mom, so I may have to jump off at some point, but for now, I'm good. I'm, I'm gonna mute, mute myself and only speak if I really need to.
Okay, thanks, Joe.
No, sorry, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay, so if there's anybody in the public who wants to speak on this, or we're going to, uh, at that point, we're gonna close the public hearing, and we do still submit written, uh, data, whatever, to, to, to town. But we won't be hearing this in public, we won't be talking about it in public, except the bird has the right to do so. So, um, so I'd like to close, close public hearing, a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, uh, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and with that, we're going to recess, uh, case number twenty-three twenty-eight, wait a second. All favor? Eyes at it, okay. Let's see. Okay, so GBA case number twenty-three twenty-nine, application of Howard and Carol Alteresto. You have that right?
You got that right, thank you.
Represented by James Doda, Doda? Is that correct, Bill? Fifteen, uh, month, fifteen, four, two, two twelve, thirty, one, one two, four, seven, six, the property is located at two forty-one Upper Bird Cliff Road, Woodstock, New York, two two four nine eight eight five acre parcel, located within an empty district, per variance from the zoning law, Tannery Woodstock, down to the, there you go, regulations, non-adequate required yards, section six, 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 B, three, three. Those ten foot friendly, and those fifty foot, three, we have, says that, construction, for shooting, of this test. So, there's no matter that we bring.
This is for site time, um, we want some direction, to the house. Start, with a, because I'm, I'm, so. Sound, here's the property, uh, which Catherine, so. Down over there. This is back here. So, it sounds like they're sitting there. John, go over the, since I was, um, um, stumbling.
So that addition is, is coming into the setback, is it correct?
That addition, it was.
This.
It's not here. Yeah. It's a stack, we're just being wrong. It's a stone. It was, kind of, fair. So, these, I don't have the right papers. Yeah, I mean, it is, yeah, we're, no, this one's a really. This was supposed to be it.
Can the town officials who need to hear this, can hear James okay?
No, that's what I was gonna say, maybe Gordon could just give like a recap once he finishes giving his presentation, because he can't hear anything.
I can't hear it either.
Right, yeah, so if you can give a recap when he's done, that's great, thank you.
So, I, I mean, this, this is, the decades, I was, I was, I was, I was, I was. It's on the second side.
Yeah, wait, can we, uh, thank.
It's on the same, exactly. So, I've gone back and just done a, it's a control, I'm sorry, I'm guessing it's just two cars to this.
Steven Zimmer? Any last, please, yes?
So, this is fifty-two feet of them? It's, it's on the map. This is, um, yeah, this was done by, uh, so, yeah, that's fifty-two here, for the, that's, that's kind of coming up.
Yeah, so, yeah, the, uh, the, uh, back, just the back.
Yeah, that's in the board? No. We will take this one out? Yeah, I have to do this one.
Okay, Michael? Does he, uh, we have contact numbers here?
Yeah, I can, I can see everything, just in this.
Did Mike say he would take this case? Okay.
Okay, would you like to read the contiguous neighbors, Michelle?
Yeah. Um, Alan and Christina Newman, twenty-three ninety-six Glasgow Turnpike, Woodstock, New York. Catherine Lim, twenty-three ninety-two Glasgow Turnpike in Woodstock. Samuel Quadev, one fourteen, fourth place, apartment four in Brooklyn. Bruce and Jeffrey Button at twenty-three sixty-six Glasgow Turnpike in Woodstock. David and Ellen Levy, Forbittles Lane in Woodstock. Todd and Diane, two fifty-three Upper Bird Cliff Road in Woodstock. Marcelo and Miriam Amari, two thirteen Upper Bird Cliff in Woodstock, and no communications were received.
Speak out. There. Okay, so that, um, you were mentioning, we'll be next month, so.
Okay.
Uh, we'll, we'll probably, you have a ready decision by then, and with that, uh, we'll be, uh, close the public hearing. Wait a second, sorry, any questions?
That's the, um, I'm, I'm, I can give a mic, so, I mean, because I'm the G C, so.
So, with that, um, close the public hearing, a second? Second, all favor? Yes, I guess, so, uh, and with that, I would like to recess case twenty-three, twenty-nine, wait a second. Something, all favor? Seven? Yeah? You want, you, you don't need the large copy, I think we have a copy in here.
Very much.
Thank you. You too. GBA case number twenty-three thirty, application of Stephen Zimmer, which was represented by Scott Rosa, of one thirty-nine Spring Street, Kingston, New York, two thousand one. The property is located at eighty-five Corporate Road, New York, two two four nine, a one point four nine acre parcel located within our district. The zoning law, Tannery Woodstock, of the four area belt regulations, application required yards, section two sixty, dash twenty-six, B, two, C, for a five foot infringement to a fifty foot rear yard setback, in order to construct eight hundred and seventy-five square foot addition of the existing dwelling. Is that it? What, how you doing? Uh, this looks better, top of this line, twenty-five, two, five, and zoom. Okay, see addition. So, it's, it's a, okay. The board? So if you want to add the map, this, right here, is basically about right here, okay, that, right? It says rear yard, but on this map, it's kind of upside down. Okay, well, yeah, the front, this is usually, that's here.
Yeah.
I've got, so. So that is to this section back here, right, yes, it's like that, this is the, that's the one.
So it must be the cat, so.
Right.
Sorry, the, the. It says something, so.
To move the additions? If this is the property, right?
Yeah.
You're adding on to here, and there's the infringements.
They're into the, there's a fifty yard setback, so it is five feet into that fifty yard setback.
Into this piece of land, even?
No, this right back here, this parcel.
Okay.
It's, this line here, it's five feet closer to the setback than is allowed, you know, I said it's set without, without variance.
And.
So it's, it's made fifty feet away from the line, it's about, it's, it's.
And if this is the house, actually, we have, where is it facing called the direction?
That's.
This is called, right? Where is the ground, like, showing, on this?
Ground goes right here.
This is the bedroom?
That's what I said.
And maybe you want to put the bedrooms?
Yeah.
Here.
I'm sorry, Gordon, who is that?
Yeah, uh, yeah, we're all in for a public hearing, so.
I'm, I'm asking questions.
I love that you raised your hand, sorry, I, I'm sorry.
Is she part of the, um, variance request?
No.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Well, I, you should see, contiguous neighbor sit on the table with the applicant.
So, now we just get the, you see, uh, Michelle, you read the contiguous neighbors?
Yes. And Hope Dickens, uh, eight four Coldbrook Road. Christopher Collins and Sheila Eisenberg, seventy coldbrook road.
Okay, what?
I'm sorry, what?
Uh.
Could you read one of the names again?
Yeah, I, I'll read.
Oh, sorry.
Richard.
Richard Volker.
Oh, go ahead, I can read it now.
Richard Volker, P O Box thirteen seventy-six, Woodstock. Darcy Dyer, sixty-nine Coldbrook Road, Bearsville. Daniel Toft and Hope Dickens, eighty-four Coldbrook Road. And Christopher Collins and Sheila Eisenberg, seventy-eight Coldbrook Road, Bearsville.
No. Have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Mark, Mark.
Um, how big is the original house that's on this lot right now? How many square feet?
One thousand forty-three.
Can't understand it, can you repeat that, Gordon?
Please. Can you?
I didn't hear it.
You didn't hear me, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
One thousand and forty-three square feet.
Thanks.
I meant to.
You want me to start?
Please, and if you, if you cannot repeat, we've already been through this.
Sure, okay, uh, first of all, I will, I will, I will, I think it's a contiguous, we have, we can do that. Okay?
Okay.
I'm moving this one.
I see you start the message.
Stephen Power, one of his winners, did an extensive home renovation about ten years ago. One day, I heard a truck coming up my driveway, a large one, and I had to see who was coming. A man was bringing materials and lumber, et cetera, and said he was going to go through the woods from my driveway, Steve's house, because as he said, quote, Steve told me to, because it was easier, unquote. Yes, Steve told me to drive up my driveway to unload construction material. The man was under the impression that he was on Steve's property, and politely withdrew, when he found that he was on my property. When I looked at his gesture, it appeared the materials may have already been transported via this route, as the vegetation was transformed, it may be that. Two years ago, and this is the one I know about, because I saw this. Stephen Power built the zebra, and Darcy said maybe true, so our values are maybe true, they built a zebra square. Next to our house, materials were transported, vehicles driving through the woods on my property, we would do. Now, I was directly across the street from the driveway that they created to transport materials to build the zebra. That driveway was made of grass and grass. That driveway was near Darcy Dyer's property, but I didn't know it at the time, I was sitting on my porch, watching. Vehicles driving through the woods on my property repeatedly. I found Steve and asked and requested his construction please stop driving through my yard. I am not sure if he unadmitted or tested if the project was near completion already. The prepared vehicles took demolished more than 20 saplings and other understated bushes and grass, other vegetation, and to this day resembles a dirt road where previously was beautiful forest ruin. The Zemner's, two previous construction projects have already infringed upon our property's quiescent destruction. That is my main cause for concern with this new proposed project. Now, the second project that they did, the gazebo, as I said.
You're going to submit that to the.
Yeah, yeah. The second project they did, um, this is their property, right? Which one's Darcy Dyer's? 371, 211, or this one? You know?
No.
Okay, and which one's mine, you know?
No, I choose.
Talking about old projects.
Old, I see, so this is probably mine. So I was directly of court, yeah.
This is Darcy's property here, I believe, 371, dash 2, dash 12. Okay, that's it.
Okay, so which one's that 13?
I don't know, I don't have all the records here.
I, I have a comment to make. Why are we discussing past renovation projects on this home when the request here is for a 5 foot infringement into a 50 foot setback? That's, that's what we're discussing, asking to go 5 feet further.
Did you pay any attention? No, you don't want, you have the property, you don't want to turn? So I'll just, well.
I'm going to get to it if you want me. Speed it up.
Yeah, we're not ready.
I mean, I understand, but it's important that you guys and women understand what is, what is going on in the past.
It wasn't this, this job.
This is not the applicant. Okay, all right, I bet.
We should accept it, we know what you're saying, we know your concerns, and we should submit this and take it into consideration, but I don't think anything that's happened in the past has to do with this applicant.
What? You hear me?
Is this the public hearing?
Please, please, Jill, continue, let's not talk about the, the.
So my concern as a contiguous property owner is two in four. One, this person has a bad history of being a bad actor in terms of respecting property owners' property.
Which person?
Zemner.
But that, is that the property owner?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're contractors.
He was a contractor. Maybe he was still a bad actor. And on two occasions, he destroyed, I watched him destroy the land, thinking that was his land. I watched it.
It, can I make a comment? It's all, from what I've seen, it's all wild words, right?
No, no.
Yeah, it was, she'll learn to talk. Sure.
Go ahead.
I'll give her one second.
Okay.
Your issue is destroying the roads, so what we can do while building, that's a shit, please, just something.
Okay.
It's one of the things, driving, it's the only thing to drive when you build that, because it's smoother, it's easier to get there than the roads. So we need to drive the roads here to build.
This driveway, there is no driving there.
It's a driveway, they should have driven this house back here, it should have driven this house right here. You live across the street, you shouldn't do that.
His driveway will not allow you to bring construction materials to the back, which is why he used Darcy Dyer's land to bring construction materials to build his gazebo.
Somebody else provides this. Would you be, would you be driving close to that, would you look to that? She'll want to know something.
Yeah.
We don't control the building process, it will never, never manage, please. We state if we desire variance, and even we don't, they must follow all applicable codes and regulations. You can take this up with Quetch, if you see that, there's just a building inspector, the ER. So if you get to take it up, if you have previous problems with them, with their construction practices, you may want to just talk to the building inspector, if this goes through, with the pass, which, it, it looks, it's not a very large address, and typically, it's 5 feet into 50 foot infringement, it's not, it's not a large building, it's on two stories, there isn't even one, but I can't say that, I'm one of those. And we, the board has to, has to come.
I, I really would like to state my case.
I'm going to let you say, I'm just, I'm just.
I really?
I, yes, so these concerns, we don't make those into our, our decision, okay?
Let me, let me give you a background on these.
Sure, I, I remember for that time.
You know who I am.
Yeah.
And you know where I used to write about the ZBIA. So I know what you guys do, and I really, really.
Sure, you know.
You have a terrible job, and you respect it. And I have not been before the ZBIA in about 30 years since I used to cover it for the government for me. I am more because of two things. Zemner had a history of being a bad actor.
I agree.
We do not trust that he, nothing even says, that he will not infringe on Darcy Dyer's land again. We do not trust that. Number two, my husband, who is not there and can't be here, wants to know how the construction materials will get up the Zemner driveway when we know it's a driveway very loud and cannot get construction materials up that driveway. I hope I can answer to that question.
If it's too late, then we'll have somebody walk it.
Samin?
Samin?
You went out using Samin?
If you have a contract, we're around, we're around, we're around. There's a bunch of guys walking around, moving stuff around.
Absolutely.
Very discussed, all of them.
I.
But again, we don't control building practices, that's up to the codes and building enforcement officer. We don't communicate that here. I understand what you're saying, this person thought that the building practices where they, they, they built it bigger than they said, or they built it this way, then we have to take that into consideration. I mentioned this to Quetch, that there is some problems. So, it's not something that we, this, I don't think we have an actual avenue here to address.
But I know from side of the building practices, what I know is he destroyed the land of a neighbor.
Well, that's quite a time.
They got to him about it. Let it say, they, they, in terms of them being a bad actors, about two years ago, he set all these roads on fire. And when I asked him to stop, he told me, don't I care about the roads? He's the most stupid of the roads, who's so concerned with the roads by burning things down. But in reality, he was burning stuff down so he could build this gazebo, he was violent. And I asked him to stop burning some of the stuff, and I was standing on my porch.
Again, a lot of this is just really out of our scope and ability to.
Well, as a neighbor, I represent, uh, Dan Toth, Hope Dickens, Darcy Dyer, myself, and Chris Newman, all contiguous neighbors.
Okay.
And you have the letter from Darcy's.
Yes, can you represent them all?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We're sticking to our, this.
Person had a letter, but not a single person. Uh, in the first one that she missed.
I'm sorry?
Well, you missed the first reading here, and the first person had a letter, but not a single person. Yeah, uh, you have done a lot of offense. Where, where, who, how do you know your letters?
Okay, I can get letters.
Well, we have one letter with, you, you have a record.
I get letters, no problem.
We can send, send letters, we have, there'll be thousands of public hearing tonight.
I can send letters.
We just have a letter for Michelle.
Michelle, yeah, tomorrow?
Yeah.
But I mean, when someone has a history of being a bad actor, you don't look at them as an audience, because you don't know what they're going to do with it, and you don't trust them.
Well, I can't go on here and say, yes, I will, you know, I mean, you're, you're telling me this. Now, that, we've dealt with plenty of neighbors who have had squabbles much bigger than that.
I know a squabber with them, I like them, nice people. Darcy has a squabber with them. They destroy her vegetation. I, on my porch is directly across the street from that safe driveway over there, and I'm telling you, for years, I've been in my house for 30 years, and for years, I used to sit on my porch and weather in beautiful trees and flowers and stuff going across the street. And after he did that work on the gazebo, they're not going to listen.
Okay, no, listen, we're going to put all our ideas on this stuff. Uh, so, hey, I'll take this case myself, I'm sure, don't play me for now.
Do you want the letters?
No.
Do you want that?
Yes, if you have ten, we can send to Michelle. I don't want it, so you can send to Michelle.
Will that be in time for the case?
Well, I can do it. Because we complete the, all this is December. We were closing the public hearing, but we separated.
Then I call the public.
They all called the public hearing, and I was, of course. So the public hearing, of course, so we don't talk, the public can't keep coming in talking.
Okay, so I just want to, my last thing is, if this is where you put a brick in the bedroom?
In the back, it's the check report.
Yeah. And there is a driveway related to the structure.
I showed you three times, and it's, uh, the counter of this guy, and those there.
Right there, okay. So we're able to get materials back to you, with people and smooth.
If there's a problem with the materials, then somebody's going to get called, obviously. And then we'll figure it out from there.
And maybe?
I, I'm not, any of you, I. It's kind of, Sheila, Sheila, that's a problem.
Okay.
I know a lot of people, but maybe, so I'm.
God?
I love you, but I'm big, marriage is a wall comes to itself.
I, I keep doing that for 30 years ago, and it's amazing. I haven't probably been in Woodstock in 30 years, I mean, but this, I just can't see how it would be this. I don't know.
Okay, well, this is, those, we'll figure it out.
And also, the other thing is, Woodstock is a very strange.
Yeah, building is, is not part of that, it's something you're, right now, that is between 8 and 18.
This is how?
Well, I, she, I don't have any, Sheila.
Well, no, it's.
I haven't, I haven't really done anything, I just wanted us to get a call. Okay?
Uh, then what is the next step, we started getting the letters?
We closed the public hearing.
And then send the letters to a court?
That's right.
Decisions?
Yeah. Eight, I go.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Make a decision, and we don't have.
And now, what's the call, what do you do?
Uh, do that, too.
Thank you for listening to everybody.
Okay.
I know I'm.
It's been a while.
Just to get back on topic, our decision is whether we grant a 5 foot uh, variance into a 50 foot setback. That's all we're dealing with here, correct?
Yeah.
Who's this? Who's she?
She's much as well, she's a member of the ZBIA.
Okay, I'm normal. Hi, Marsha.
Hi.
Nice to meet you.
Good to meet you as well. I'm very concerned about our roads and our neighborhood as well, but you have to realize that our jurisdiction only has to do with a variance. The other things you were discussing, you know, cer- certainly will be taken into consideration, but as our power, as the zoning board of appeals, we say yes to a variance or no to a variance, simple as that. And the variance is specifically asking to go 5 feet into a 50 foot setback.
Marsha, Marsha, we entered this, let's, let's move on.
Well, thank you all for listening to me, those of you at home, those of you there.
Thank you, Jill.
I apologize for trying, um, you know, not to mention the works, but it was all right, actually. It's, we're not going to destroy anything, we're different from the last contractors. I don't.
Okay, so with that, I would like to close the public hearing. Second ZBIA case 2330, so, hold on a minute.
Hi.
So, my time is over. With that, we will close, uh, 23, 20 seconds, one second. Hold on a minute.
Hi.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. A good night, good luck. See you back here. That's what I said. Hey, moving on. That can be done. ZBIA case 23, dash 21, application package to Jessica Rhodes. The property location, you know, drive, it's at New York 2249 acre parcel located in the North, 1.56. Excuse me. Back, I forget, and in both regulations, section 260, dash 16, attachment to column 2B, to, to allow the construction of a 300 perimeter square foot exterior that the lot currently exceeds the 10% maximum at 767 square feet. Okay, so, let me move it. So, that letter sums it up, uh, except a little bit further than, uh, square footage, although it's actually less than that, because when Quetch did many numbers, it was based off of, um, so a previous work done on the, which was several hundred square foot patio, which we then used, uh, as a foundation for an addition that we put out. So it's actually about, no, like 600 square foot over that offensively. Uh, that's the, the closer number. So this is basically our continuation, um, completely separate, that which we did a few years ago, uh, to add a uh, onto the house, um, going to book it. The addition, it was designed to have, um, a patio, and we didn't do it. I have that now, so, right, um. Uh, it's a ground level back, yeah. Uh, out about 13 feet from the house, it would cover both of, out from the back of the house, um, and that's, that's pretty much, um, the red, started back in August with, putting in, they were going to application then, but she, um, they got denied for, over a month because the, 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 it was done for the town. So when we came in, walked into the front, and found out that we'd come to the ZBIA, we got the, the application filled it out right back, and in the meantime, I didn't, I missed. Another thing, I, 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 somebody, uh, last month, we got canceled, so we, we, so, uh, uh, we, we have to, uh, so we walked past that, we wanted to get, that's what we done, so, after we went to the guy, um, so. Stayed around there, um, but that's kind of where it's staying now, okay, that's it, so. All right, are there any questions on the board? Anybody, will you, may I take this out? Watch this, that, that.
What?
I'll do it, Gordon, I can do it.
You can do it?
Yep, I'll do it.
Thank you, Joe.
Of course.
And we, we, this process before the September meetings, that we can do, just. Joe, you know when you can get there?
Um, I can probably get there next week, one day, maybe over the weekend.
Okay.
But I'll get all the information from Michelle, and, um, I'll, I'll try to get there over the weekend or early next week.
Joe, we're actually closed tomorrow?
Okay. So I'll reach out to you Monday, yeah.
Okay, awesome.
Okay, all right, great.
One second. I was going to keep talking to the same people. Continuer, Sanders?
Albert Grossman, 1419 Commonwealth Avenue, Binghamton, Massachusetts. Virginia Tate, Peel Box 303 in Woodstock. Bruce Ronenberg, 40 Overlook Drive in Woodstock. James Mongan, 43 Overlook Drive in Woodstock. Christopher and Etna Cahill, 41 Overlook Drive in Woodstock. And Rosemary Mitchell, 7 Marco Grove in Woodstock. No communications were received.
Okay. All right, so, with that, uh, we'll close the public hearing. Case 2331, hold on a second, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Hi.
All right, Shannon? All right, Patrick, thanks. And we're going to reset case 2331, second. Got one, one little thing of business here. Wrap it up. We have, uh, here's the letter, I'm just, I just, I just, our conversation, a few bucks, while we were requesting a one-year extension of a ZBIA variance approval to construct and attach accessory part of dealer-related COVID-related device and formation with New York City, New York City EDP ownership improvements to our insurance. New York City EEP ownership improvements to our insurance, which also has had a, unable to work this year. Uh, please confirm, see, blah, 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 to the person, so, uh, we'd like to, uh, both to give her this one-year extension, one second?
Second.
All better?
Um.
All right. Yes, so we have, uh, at least four.
Perfect.
Those busy, so, there we go, advances.
Yep, I'll send out the letter on Monday.
Okay. So. I'd just like to welcome, uh, Steven, who's, who's on chat, or, I don't know, he's gonna take it back out to the right, but, uh.
Welcome, Steven, I think you'll be a great addition to the board.
Sorry, the audio was terrible today, though, Steven.
Sorry, what'd you say?
I'm so sorry that the audio was terrible today.
No worries.
Really bad.
It's only up from here with the audio.
Okay.
Are we discussing the December twenty-eighth meeting that's on the agenda there?
Oh, is that on the agenda, too? Uh, I think, I hope we cancel the December twenty-eighth meeting, one second, second, all better? All right, time?
That was quick.
I did, uh, there's something that's not on the agenda, but I did want to bring it up, since we've had such terrible connection again tonight. Um, once the addition is finished, which should be close to the beginning of December, mid-December, um, that room is not gonna be available for meetings. So all of the town meetings are gonna be moved once again to the community center.
Okay.
And as we remember, Zoom at the community center was a complete nightmare, even more so than here. So I believe that moving forward, it's gonna start to be all-in-person meetings once again.
Okay.
Including myself.
Okay.
I just wanted to put that out there, so everybody's prepared.
I, I should be there in person December eleventh, and that will be my last meeting of, of the term.
I think it's the fourteenth, March, is it the fourteenth, the eleventh?
I thought it was the eleventh, fourteenth?
The, the, uh, the men's meeting on Sunday, we have a pretty successful Zoom meeting over there, Sunday mornings. When, uh, when are we gonna start meeting?
Oh, you're right, it is December fourteenth, thanks.
Uh, are we going?
Fourteenth Friday, yeah, that's what I thought.
Michelle, will you be meeting at the community center in December?
Wait, what?
When are we gonna start meeting?
Fourteenth is on December.
Okay, so, are you ready to meet, so, time's on, all better? All right, last one review?
I'm probably gonna say starting January.
I would like to adjourn to that meeting. One second, all better?
Bye.
Everybody?
Yay.
Bye.
Have a good night, everybody, thank you.
Thanks.